This conference will now be recorded.
Usually it's covered.
Are you ready to run?
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Sedalia City Council order. We're going to begin with prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor. And lead us in prayer.
Would you stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrator, members and staff need to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication to the city. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMT, hospital staffs, they who work 24/7 to serve and protect us at their own peril. And tonight especially for the fire department, we're honoring that 20 years for James Volk, firefighting for us, serving this community for 20 years. We are so grateful for that service. We are also grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these nearly 248 years. Please bless and protect all of our military and civilians serving our country today here and throughout the world. And now as we meet tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
First item on our agenda is a service award. We'll go ahead and invite up Chief Irwin to present that service award.
Good evening, guys. This evening, we are celebrating Inspector James Volk's 20 years of service to the Sedalia Fire Department. A number of years ago, Jamie was asked to take on a position that is not the most illustrious in the fire service. Not many people want this position. Few excel in this position. And Jamie has done that over the 10 years-ish, 15 years that he has been an inspector for the city of Sedalia. As you are aware, he does this, or may not be aware, he does this with enthusiasm every day. He loves his job. He loves interacting with kids when he goes to the schools. Jamie is always one of the first ones to volunteer for, whether it be fireworks, going to car shows, going to this, going to that, to represent the city and the Sedalia Fire Department. And for that, I am eternally grateful to him for it. Sometimes he is not the, sometimes this job and inspections is not the easiest for him or me or anybody in the department. He takes that every day, moves on. It comes, the next day is a fresh day and is always ready to serve the community and the city of Sedalia. And giving 20 years to the city of Sedalia, I am eternally grateful for him. I would say I hope I get 10 more or 20 more out of him. I know I'm not going to get it, but...
Jamie, no.
But anyway, Jamie Volk, congratulations on 20 years of service of the city of Sedalia.
Old George would be proud of you there.
Yeah, good.
Congrats, Jamie.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session minutes dated August 19th, 2024. These are council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second?
Both are approved.
Second.
Do I have any additions or suggestions? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Now we'll move on to the roll call of standing committees. Up first, we have Public Works. Chairman Hillary, you have the floor.
I've got five items now to consider, one discussion, and five ordinances and one resolution. And the first discussion will be by Director Bray, so if you'd like to come up.
Mr. Mayor. So, made a presentation to kind of wrap up, to show all of our paving projects, everything that we've completed this year, and some of the numbers associated with that. So, go ahead and get started. So, this is for FY '25 capital paving projects. So, 16th, I'm sorry, South Kentucky Avenue and 16th to 20th Street, completed. It is under budget. North Engineer Avenue Tower, Reinie and some of Reinie, also under budget and completed. South Ingram, 16th Street to City Limits, completed and also under budget. South Grand Avenue, 20th to 24th Street, we went ahead and pulled that. We made an internal decision to pull it because of the water lines. The water lines are, and underneath of that section of roadway really need to be replaced from 20th Street down to City Limits. So, we're going to pull it for this year and then propose it again for next year to continue and do the whole stretch so we can do it all at once. South, I'm sorry, North Grand Avenue, Main Street to 65 Highway, completed, also under budget. We added an additional road, which is the outer road, kind of right next to Le Maire's and the hotel there. We did it from Winchester to the West Property Limits. And then, we have not started yet on the downtown alleys. So, totals, we were budgeted $9,000, I'm sorry, $979,000. Total spent just in materials, $469,845. So, the remaining budget being $509,155. The parking lot improvements, we've completed the Pacific and North Ohio Parking Lot, under budget. We've completed the parking lot at Main and Osage, also under budget. And we have yet to start the parking lot at East 7th and South Ohio Avenue. So, while we're on, while I'm talking about these things being under budget, on the main thoroughfares that we encountered, we were anticipating a lot of base failures, a lot of deeper, a little bit deeper superficial failures. Luckily, whenever we started milling them, we had hardly any of the base failures that we were expecting. We did have a few, not to say that we didn't have any, we did have a few, but hardly any of the base failures that we had anticipated in years past. Whether that be from weather, whether that be just from, you know, good conditions, just the right conditions for paving, but we'll take it as a win. So, we have a couple of streets that, because we have remaining budget left over, I have a couple of streets that we internally have evaluated and we would like to propose to go ahead and tackle. Eagle View Drive, there's superficial failures and a poor approach on the new Casey's. Estimated for materials at just the cost for materials, that's $42,000 for mill and overlay. That'd be at a three-inch mill and repave and to correct the approaches. South Warren Avenue, 16th Street to 20th Street, again, estimated cost just for materials is $115,000. I am expecting a few base failures on that. There's a line of some pretty significant superficial failures and a line of base failures that coincide with that as well. South Park Avenue, 32nd Street to South City Limits, we threw a couple of different options up here. There is some alligator cracking on the shoulders as well as some superficial failures. There's hardly any base failures really. There is a couple, but there's nothing like there is on South Warren. So, we threw a couple of different options up there. So, asphalt, mill and overlay and tack oil would be around $85,000. And chip seal, which is an option, would be about $7,000. So, for the additional projects, for materials only, this isn't labor or fuel, this is just material, Eagle View, South Warren and South Park, if we were to do a mill, we look at about $242,000. If we were to do the chip and seal on South Park Avenue, it'd be $164,000.
Yeah, so I'll pick up here. So, in summary, just kind of going through the numbers there, just reminding you again, we had a $979,000 budget for the materials only, that doesn't include the labor and equipment. So, the completed projects, as Director Bray had indicated, we had spent, we're significantly under budget on the projects that we are, and then there's a couple of projects that we aren't doing yet. And so, we're at $470,000 roughly. And then, when you look back, if you remember last year, we did not get the allocation from the county of the countywide sales tax. So, that comes out of the reserves. So, that's, you take that out, you would have a remaining budget of $143,755. If you put all of those additional projects in, and that would be $242,000. And if you did them all as the mill and overlay and not the chip and seal option, that would leave you to where you would be spending down reserves by $98,245. Also, if you all will know that the current year's allocation, the way that the county allocated the half-cent sales tax is not on any of these projects, so we cannot access those funds. We have met with them, asked them to take another look at that and see if they would reallocate those funds so that we can use them on these projects. But if they don't do that, then, and you went ahead with these additional projects, you would be spending down reserves $163,645. So, really, the question in front of council is, are you comfortable with going forward with these additional projects at the $242,000 estimate? Or do you want to wait and see what the county does, if they will reallocate those funds? Or do you want to just stop where we're at? So, those are kind of your options.
Or we can pick and choose which, you know, if you don't want to do all of them, if you want to just do some of them. We wanted to put this in front of you and see what your, what your direction is.
I think we should do and do all of them. And if we get the money from the county, so be it. I mean, I don't, I don't think we should wait on them, but we don't know what, you know, what's going to happen there. And do these streets need to be fixed?
Justin, if we wait to do these projects through the winter, I know we always get a lot of potholes from the water and contracting in the streets, we would probably be spending substantially more next year to do these, if you would have base failures, I assume, from issues of the winter, because we always are blessed with times of new potholes in the winter.
Yes, the base failures would be increased dramatically, let alone also the superficial failures, which whenever it comes to milling, superficial failures really don't impact a whole lot until it gets down into the medium base or subbase. But once, once you get into the base layers of asphalt and/or ship, or the rock underneath, it's significant failures for the road from the surface of the road.
And Eagle View, can you interrupt?
Sure.
Second interject. Eagle View, as we talked about it, we're going to have to do something. So, it's probably, Justin was just ballparking, it'd take about half of that just to patch it.
Okay.
And then next year, you'd have to come back and do it right. So, if we're going to do, I would recommend that we at least do Eagle View, because we're going to be money ahead by doing Eagle View. The others are more options.
And chip and seal does not last very long. How long do you think that lasts?
In the right conditions, it could last up to seven years. It's on a place...
In Sedalia, Missouri, they last that long?
In some road laziness.
Yes, okay.
But on, on South Park, it'd probably be a two- to three-year, two, two- to three-year cap.
Okay. So, it would make a lot more sense to do the mill and overlay, because it would be, we're going to turn around and have to do it anyway.
At some point, yes.
We've gone back and forth on 32nd, Grand, from 20th basically to 32nd for the last two or three years. And I don't have any problem with having additional projects, but that, especially getting out towards 32nd Street, Grand is really falling far. And it's always been, well, we're going to do the water lines, we're going to do the water lines. We really need to get those water lines corrected. That water line didn't break this year, which really surprised me. And I, and I think it makes more sense doing what we're doing, running from 20th all the way up to 32nd. But on behalf of the people in the full court in that area, that needs to get done. And, and we can't delay it very long. I guess the other thing is, if I, that road tax comes up for a vote next year, I think. And certainly, the people of Pettis County that live inside the city of Sedalia need to take a long, hard look at doing that sales tax if we don't get that reimbursement. And we need to be, make sure people understand that, the effects that this is having.
Point of information, where does that put us with the regards to the combined unassigned fund balance in the general fund?
Well, this is in the capital improvement fund. And that 463 would put us, goodness, I should have looked at that, but it puts us very low. It puts us in probably about that, probably in about the half a million dollar range. And if I could just add on to that, Councilman Bliss, to your point, we're, we're still going to have to come back into Grand next year. And, and so if you go in the hole this, this much this year, then it's just that much less we can do next year, because Grand has to be there.
I agree. I just talked to those people and they, I said, hey, we've got a waiting year, we're going to do the water lines. And that was two years ago. So, I'm going to go back and talk to folks in that area again and say, hey, we're going to put it off in a year.
And that was council, what was the whole, number one?
It makes sense. And I just want the council to hear that, that we've delayed that for several years. But that also means we've got to get the water line. So, that's a pretty significant budget amount too, right?
That's in design or out to bid, I can't remember what the answer was. But we're planning on doing that this spring, and then we can do the, the road.
The engineering came back, but they had some issues right there with the piping at 20th, or I'm sorry, at 24th and Grand. And we sent it back to have that portion re-engineered. And then after that, we should have it ready to, to be able to bid probably this fall or through the winter.
So, that's been the issue, but I mean, it's hubba hubba.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're saying is, is I think that's, well, not for sure, but...
I made my point.
Yeah, that's what we are really trying to get it done, this, this winter, spring, so that we can do the road next spring.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, so I would entertain a motion here to provide some direction, some council wants to bid.
I make a motion that we do it all?
I have a motion that we do it all, I have a second. Having council discussion regarding a motion.
And we're talking, when we're saying all, we're talking about the additional projects at $242?
Yes, they were talking about, hey, we're taking our reserves down to the minimum that we like to have them. Is that what I heard Andrew's question directly?
And Jack, are you suggesting that we do the mill and overlay on South Park or the chip and seal?
No.
Okay, I just want to be clear. So, you want to do the chip and seal on South Park?
No, I'm sorry, I don't want to do the chip and seal.
You want to do the mill and overlay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to do everything that's in the less call?
Yes, the less call.
Just wanted to be sure, thank you.
Any further council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, we'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
My second item is presented during previous council meeting, New Core has been working on projects and the portion of the rail spur to handle further growth and make their operations more efficient. Part of this pension occurred on city-owned property adjacent to the city's portion of the rail spur built with grant funds. In order to stay in compliance with the grant requirements and the Chapter 100 Development Agreement with New Core, legal staff worked through necessary documents. The ordinance approves the easement for addition to the rail spur and amends the various documents for the Chapter 100 agreement. Jack recommended passing this ordinance.
Call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the amendments to the agreement.
Bill number 2024-172, an ordinance authorizing the amendment of certain agreements relating to the city's taxable industrial revenue bonds, Project New Core, Series 2018, and authorizing other actions in connection therewith.
I have a motion, a second, for the second reading. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-172, an ordinance authorizing the amendment of certain agreements relating to the city's taxable industrial revenue bonds, Project New Core, Series 2018, and authorizing other actions in connection therewith.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Third item, the airport utilizes Fuel Master as an automated system that provides customers with self-service to aviation fuel outside of normal business hours. Our current system was damaged by lightning in the past and has been an ongoing maintenance issue. Staff has tried several different ways to connect the device to our network, but due to the system's age, we cannot find a reliable connection that is in compliance with required security measures. After further research, many options are cost prohibitive, such as boring full lines under the taxiway, which is considerable distance from the fuel tank. Staff has located a solution through Fuel Master that will use a cell phone connection that is in compliance with the credit card import. We'll no longer need a dedicated full line to the current device, which helps offset the cost of the upgrade Fuel Master system. Our customers have been without this option for a year, and staff recommends upgrade and budget amendment.
Okay, this is a budget amendment, so we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to this matter. We'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2107, a resolution of the City Council of City State of Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second, to approve. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-173, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding airport Fuel Master system upgrade.
Second reading, second.
I have a motion, a second, for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-173, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025 regarding airport Fuel Master system upgrade.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham is absent. Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Now, I'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second and final ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number 2024-174, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for updating Fuel Master self-serve fuel system at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-174, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for updating Fuel Master self-serve fuel system at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Final passage.
I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Oldham is absent. Seven yes, one absent.
Okay, my fourth item tonight is the city has been successful in utilizing grant funds to maintain and add improvements to the airport. The federal program allows for ongoing allocations to the city as part of the funding pool. And then we can apply for additional funds through a competitive process. Each grant are typically 90/10, grant in that the grants fund 9% of the total project cost. Director Dodson applied for and received the grant to make improvements to the north taxiway and northern 500 feet of runway. Applying for the grant, council in anticipation of receiving the grant authorized a budget amendment for expenses. Staff recommends accepting the grant.
Okay, go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the grant agreement.
Bill number 2024-175, an ordinance approving and accepting a grant agreement for a taxiway runway project at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
I have a motion, a second, for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-175, an ordinance approving and accepting a grant agreement for a taxiway runway project at the Sedalia Regional Airport.
Final passage.
I have a motion, a second, for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Our final item tonight is Garner Denver made a formal written request to widen two of their entrances for trucks to enter their shipping and receiving docks. The current width of 28 feet is not allowed for long trucks to efficiently enter the plant. Many times, the trucks are forced to enter opposing lanes of traffic and turn out of the plant onto state fair boulevard. We reviewed the project, and our zoning code does not cover various variances in respect to drive approaches. Our current policy adopted to the public works standards all allows for 35-feet maximum driveway approach, and therefore recommends council grant a variance to allow Garner Denver to widen two driveways approach to 50 feet.
All right, call for the reading of the bill authorizing a variance request.
Bill number 2024-176, an ordinance authorizing a variance request for widening a driveway approach.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for a second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Bill number 2024-176, an ordinance authorizing a variance request for widening a driveway approach. Bill number 2024-176, an ordinance authorizing a variance request for widening a driveway approach.
Final passage, second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Thank you, Chairman Hiller. Next we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
The council needs two resolutions authorizing grant applications by the police department. Chief, would you like to come up and address these for somebody from next? We'd love to.
Chief's at the Citizens Police Academy tonight. The Homeland Security Grant, this grant has been one of them that they've been in the past, and it was done when I was there, and it provides equipment for different various reasons, so this is a request to apply for that grant.
I believe they're applying for a MDT.
I think this one's for an MDT, if I remember right. Or is that the CTO? I apologize.
One of them's radios and one of them's really tough.
Okay, well, this is the radios then, isn't it?
All right, having heard none, call for the reading of the first resolution authorizing the arrangement of the.
Resolution 2108, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the city of Sedalia in the application process for FY 2024 State Counterterrorism Officer Equipment Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding this resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
The second one's Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant for $25,000.
All right, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to go ahead and enter into this process.
Resolution 2109, a resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the city of Sedalia in the application process for the Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Next we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you, we have one item tonight, and it's an ordinance. The Sedalia Convention and Visitor Bureau has requested assistance from the city by providing transportation to several of the upcoming community events, such as the Mozark Fest. To support these events, we have received a proposal to enter into a demonstration contract with Missouri Propane Education and Research Council for the use and rental of a propane-powered shuttle bus for $1. The city will provide insurance, and the CBB will provide the properly licensed driver. This is a great opportunity to support community events that bring visitors to our city. Staff recommends accepting the ordinance and contract.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the demonstration contract.
Bill number 2024-177, an ordinance authorizing a demonstration contract for use and rental of propane-powered shuttle bus to provide passenger-related transportation.
Second reading. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
177, an ordinance authorizing a demonstration contract for use and rental of propane-powered shuttle bus to provide passenger-related transportation.
Final passage.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Our next item on our agenda would be the approval of the liquor licenses. Go ahead and call for the reading of the liquor license.
We have two new licenses and one renewal tonight. New licenses for Melissa Atkinson doing businesses, the 518 provisions at 520 South Ohio for a special event for open door benefit at the MEC Building at 2503 West 16th, and Stacy White doing businesses, Peas Place at 815 East Broadway for liquor by the drink, and renewal for Mike Emery doing businesses, CBS number 10305 at 100 East Broadway for packaged liquor, Sunday sales, and taste testing.
Motion to approve and block.
Second. I have a motion to approve and block in a second. Do I have any council discussion or questions? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Now we have any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator? Anybody got anything? You have the floor.
On rec. For the, how did, around the? What is the one called? The Mozark Fest. That Saturday, there will be a car show out there. There will also be the Vietnam Wall over by the train, and there's going to be several other things going on. Also, these are the bands. Dr. Gibbards has told me that he's got some pretty good, they're not the bands themselves, but to the fans that imitate him. He's got a lot of good lineup packs going on. My Car Club will be out there Saturday. Sunday will be a Volkswagen. That is a national Volkswagen show. It will be out there, probably up by the grandstand. So there will be a lot going on out there this, that weekend. That's three weekends from this coming weekend. A week from this Saturday, the mayor and I will be at, out at Liberty Park, the things to go. I will be there with the Derek car, and Andy has graciously helped me the last couple of years with that. We let the kids sit in the car. There'll be tow trucks, all kinds of different things, police cars, fire trucks. Hopefully, we're going to be able to introduce Freddy the fire truck out there. Got a lot, that's pretty neat, though. There'll probably be about 300 kids usually, so I'm kind of looking forward to that. So got a lot of stuff coming up, and then, of course, the council will be gone the 14th, whenever, the 15th to the 18th will be down in Branson. Maybe getting upgrades on the new laws that are going to take effect for us, so anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Very good.
I have two announcements. I don't see anyone here tonight from TruVine Church here in Sedalia, but last year they gave away free gas at the break time up on Broadway, and they're going to be doing that again this coming Saturday, which is September the 7th. First come, first served, so free gas at break time, September the 7th. Another announcement I'd like to make, I tried to get the word out and ask people to share, tomorrow night here at the City Hall, we will have a follow-up meeting with the information about the tiny homes here in Sedalia. That meeting will start at 5:30, and we have changed some of the wording as suggested from both that came to the first meeting, and hopefully we can get this passed.
Anyone else?
I would please like to welcome Brian Kopp, our chief building official. He just started this, what, week? Has he been here a week already?
Yes, week and a day now.
Hi, everyone. My name's Brian Kopp, certified building official and floodplain administrator. Want to thank everyone for bringing me on board. Been in this industry for about 24 years. The 24, I've been serving in the chief building official role for about 16 of that. Managed the department of up to 16 people with the code enforcement division, building division, and administrative division. I worked at a department where I was the only inspector, plan examiner, and code enforcement officer, and way back in my history, a friend of mine and I had opened a pizza delivery and carryout place from scratch. We came up with a marketing concept, ran that well for a year and sold it off, but it gave me a really good understanding of the business side of what we do. So very happy to be here, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you for bringing me on board.
Well, give you a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I just had one other item, just to remind everybody on council and in the audience as well, is the next council meeting has been moved. It will, it's normally the third Monday, but due to the MML conference, council loaded last meeting to move it to the fourth Monday, so it'll be September 23rd. So if you show up here on the 16th, you will not be here.
You'll be learning.
Yes. Very good. Anyone else? All right, having heard nothing further, we'll go ahead and move on to the Good and Welfare section of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone of the framework for this segment. Each speaker is requested to step forward, clearly state their name, address, and will be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council, nor is there a period for question and answer. It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered into the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to community matters. With that, go ahead and step on up.
My name is Gary Lova. I live at 821 South Arnold Avenue. I just have one question on this resolution, call for resolution. That would be in writing, right? All their opinions and their stating facts and reasons to give the city council, that all be down listed in writing? I mean, it won't be trumpet player and hear ye, hear ye, where I'll be outside and they'll announce it, but it will be in a paper form. We can all read their reasons and answers and the facts that they determined for raising their 2025 budget? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Lova. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is David Goodson, and I reside at 1640 Edge Apple Drive. Thank you, guys, for the speaker. The sound is wonderful. We can hear you, so good deal there. Like to comment, congratulations to the road crew. I forgot the gentleman's name, but bringing these projects in under budget, certainly they've been nice additions, and I would agree Eagleview Drive is in bad shape. But you know, you talk about the shortfall with the county. Guys, you guys sent a letter out that was borderline half-truth, spent like $15,000 to send it out. When you're asking the county to help you, give you this money, and then you send a letter out like this, that is bad negotiating 101. That is no way to get a deal done. I would tell you, I firmly believe that I could sit down with the commissioners and in 90 minutes have this deal solved by good negotiating skills and relationship building. We all got in this role, let's not forget who got us there and why we're there. We didn't have to be in this situation. Steve, I agree with you. This comes in front of voters next year, this road tax. I think the voters need to take a long, hard look at why we're in this position, and look at the people and individuals who put us in this position, and vote accordingly. And I would urge you to try to patch this up with the county, but sending a letter out is just not called for, a waste of taxpayer money. The county also allocated $200,000 to you guys for the Washington Street Bridge, and I believe on top of that, I wouldn't say it was around $340,000-ish, was also granted in that, but then I think the city decided those projects weren't on the radar screen or didn't want to do them. So I think the county's been good, and I think the county's sustaining their ground for what I call being bullied and powerplayed on the situation they were put in. Most people that I talked to applaud the county commissioners for standing their ground, and I think that that's what we want to see. So I think we all want to see the city and the county working together for the betterment of our community, and I would ask the council again to look at who's in charge, and look at what's happening, and look who put us here. Those are the things we can change that will make Sedalia better, and I would urge you guys to give those serious consideration. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for that, Speaker.
Hey, Mr. Goodson. All right, who's up next? Come on up.
My name is Susan Freezy. I live at 1800 East 22nd Street. According to Section 6337 regarding residential neighborhoods, the single-family residential district is intended to provide for low-density residential use area developed in a manner that reflects a suburban character. To refresh your memories, I live in Eaglebrook Farms, a residential neighborhood. I was here before you, this past July, to complain about a resident in this neighborhood who is using his lot for commercial purposes. I'm not sure of what transpired after that meeting, but the resident did seem to clean up some of his act for a short while. He put licenses on his trailers, and they were not seen as frequently. He didn't, he never did get rid of all his equipment in his backyard. On Sunday, August 25th, I saw a pickup hauling a flatbed trailer loaded with pipes driving in the neighborhood. When the pickup left, there were no pipes on the trailer. I've also witnessed trailers left setting unattached to a vehicle in the street and a backhoe in its backyard. The backhoe comes and goes. This morning, a backhoe was there, and so was an attachment at the end of the street just off the concrete. A few days ago, one of his pickups with a trailer and a piece of big equipment pulled in and parked for the night. This equipment is left out for children who could easily access it and get hurt. How safe is that? As soon as this resident tries to make a little progress, then wait a while and resume his business as usual, which means to him that he can use his residence for whatever purposes he desires. City ordinances do not seem to matter to him. There are other residents in this neighborhood who own their own business. They never use their homes to store their equipment. Now I'm asking the city to take a tougher stance with this resident and start giving him hefty fines for continuing his commercial business in our residential neighborhood. I checked planning and zoning fines. This man could receive a $500 fine and up to 90 days in jail. Maybe towing off his trailers and confiscating some of these items would also get his attention. Please do something to get this commercial business moved out of the neighborhood. There are a lot of children visiting and living in the neighborhood and playing in the street. Adults are often out walking because it is relatively safe. Does this issue have to wait until someone gets hurt? I'm asking you to please do something to let this man know he cannot keep this up.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Janet Movansky. I live at 723 East 5th Street. I'm asking the city council again, I know many towns do the three-minute deal. I'd like to see five minutes that we can speak. We give you all the respect that you all deserve. We sit here and listen the whole time to you all. We would just like a couple extra minutes in case there's something else that we would like to say before we get cut off. Last time I noticed, when I was speaking, everybody was diddly-baddling around, whispering to each other, and on their phones and whatever else. When we're up here speaking, we just like a little respect, too. Another thing is, it's to my understanding that you all voted Mr. Shaw in. We would like to see you vote him out. Two raises in years, a little too much. I'd like to have a raise. I work for $14 an hour and support two grandchildren. So either pay a contract off, vote him out, whatever. I'm just letting you all know that Sedalia has literally gone downhill, really. I've asked about you all, we're talking about Park Street. I don't know if anybody drives between Third Street and Main Street on Park Street, but it's caving in. I'm not sure what that street is. Is it Liberty Park Boulevard on the other side of the park? Is that right? I think that's the name of the street. But anyways, at that corner right there, the street is caving in. So I mean, if a heavy truck or something come through there, you can tell it's sinking in really bad, and I would think that would need to be fixed. The other thing I have is the stop sign that gets in Hancock, it's open all the way to Fifth and Engineer. It's like a Speedway down through there. Again, I'm putting my big SUV out in the street to slow the traffic down, because there's a car on each side, they have to slow down to come through there. there's a car on each side, they have to slow down to come through there. If we could get a four-way stop at Fifth and Ha, Fifth and Montgomery to slow that traffic down like it used to be, if somebody for some reason decided that the stop signs needed to be on the north and south side, that doesn't help the east and west traffic. If you don't believe me, just come over there sometime and sit, or put some kind of traffic thing over there to see how fast people are driving down through there. There are several children there. I don't want to see another child be ran over. And I'm talking, they're flying down through there. So I'm asking you again to consider that stop sign. Consider the three minutes and consider getting rid of Mr. Shaw, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next? Come on up. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to move to close session.
Motion to move to close session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the motion? Having heard none, roll call please.
Robinson? Oldham is absent. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Chris, did you mute it? Chris, did you mute us or something? Yeah. Are those yours? Well, there's, Chris, you brought those in to see how it worked. Thank you. That's a great idea. Ready to go?
Yep.
Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn.[1784.31]